Okay, moving on to number one on their own deferred business. Number two zero two three dash zero eight dash two zero. First reading, this was deferred from August seventh, two thousand twenty three. Well, anyway, yeah.
I think we should start that.
Okay, um, I guess I'll, so if we had to propose ordinance. There's a lot of questions from the department heads about how they're affect their departments and so forth. We really didn't have an answer, so we collectively had a department head meeting with attorney Nichols and the city staff, legal staff, just to answer any questions and see what they were add. And there was a great, great discussion, but again, we had no answers to their questions about how does this impact and alter the way that they do business. They're the ones making the purchases. Looking at contracts and we had questions about bids, how does it affect that? Change orders, there's an emergency situation that exists. That sort of distributions, which we just want to. And then a lot of the quotes that they get are their net fifteen or that's already beyond that, especially case, a lot of net fifteen quotes. How do we handle all that? So we just thought, if it's actually a department you have questions, I wish I could answer, but I can't. But maybe wait for the council to get some podium questions and concerns to the council if they're. I don't want, yeah, Pat, I don't want.
Before you have discussion, you really need to have a motion and a second bond to open it upwards.
Okay, alright, so I guess I'll turn it over to Dawn and the council on any conversation or.
We'll make motions without the words number twenty twenty dash oh eight dash twenty.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion.
The motion's out of order, it's a first meeting.
Read the title.
Say your motion.
Make motion to the title of the ordinance number twenty twenty three, okay.
A motion to for approval.
Now, I'll second.
And the second, need further discussion.
First, the first motion of the trial.
Yes.
And which is the trial person. So since we're in discussion, I'll turn it over to the council first.
My, I used to have two things to say, the two. One, if the attorney keys weren't so astronomical, we probably wouldn't have brought this up with that department. That's number one. Number two, I've been up here eight years, seven of them with Mr. Uran. And for seven years, I heard him say, you guys are the ones that vote on your fiscal body over and over and over and over. And then when we brought this up, because when he said, we just want to take a look at the attorney, he said, all we asked for a couple of years ago, it was, nope, veto. So what are we hiding? That's all we're asking, we're just asking to look at it, that's it. And I think we have that right as the fiscal body. That's all I have to say, that's it.
Okay, so I want, I do want to say. I'm sorry, can you speak in Korean? I'm sorry. This came up obviously four years ago before I was on council and I know it was a big deal then. The first thing is, is when it was brought up again, when we talked about for me this guy on here, you know, it needs to be known that this is nothing personal against anybody, any department, any anybody. We are the fiscal fiduciary body for the city and we see no contracts, none. And personally, when this first started going wrong and we received a letter from Mr. Nichols, I was offended. I was extremely offended. Because him stating that, you know, he wanted to talk about this before we had took, ahead of meeting in public that might bring some chagrin to the council. Not sure how we could be under any chagrin when we, all we want to do are look at contracts and make sure that the assets that we're responsible for are, we know what's going on. That's all this is about, is that we know also what's going on. We are not trying to change the person purchasing agent for the city that's still Board of Works. This is only us looking at contracts over a certain amount. So our attorney, Pat, really wrote a phenomenal letter in response to that, that I want to read just a little bit of it. Because again, I was extremely offended by that. There's no chagrin in a public meeting that we ask to see some contracts for the departments that were responsible, were responsible fiscally for the city. So I'm not sure how that would be any chagrin towards us. I, this is just a paragraph from Pat's masterful letter, honestly, and I'd like to share with everybody, but here's just, here's just a paragraph. One thing that needs to be made clear that the council is not attempting to make itself a purchasing agency. Although it can certainly do so pursuant to statute, just as it had the power to name Board of Works in nineteen ninety eight through an ordinance, that, that is the case, in nineteen ninety eight, the council, whoever was on it at the time, named Board of Works as the purchasing agents. So back then, everyone thought it was okay that council made this decision, back then in nineteen ninety eight. It's interesting that the executive in nineteen ninety eight had no issues with the council's authority under the statute to name purchasing agency, but seemed to refuse to acknowledge the power to change that if desired at this time. Despite the power to do so, the current proposed ordinance does not, does not remove the Board of Works as a purchasing agency. It's supplemented by requirement regarding council approval only on contracts exceeding a certain sum. As a council is the fiscal body of the city, I find it interesting that the executive will find that odd or objectum, et cetera. I understand wanting it, or not wanting it, for practical and administrative standpoint and not for a legal standpoint. And again, this went on and it was a, it was a great letter saying that legally we do have this right. And in nineteen eighty eight, or nineteen ninety eight, we, the council, named the Board of Works as a purchasing agency. So we're not even trying to take that away, we're not trying to make anyone's life difficult. There's a couple of other things they're playing. The fact that one of our council members told me that this would put a lot on work on us. We get paid, people, we get paid to do this. No, it's not a full-time job for any of us, but we get paid. In fact, I think we're going to vote on a pay raise. So I don't care how much work it gives us. Why would we not want to be part of that, not even decision-making process, just a second look? Every other board and commission in this city comes to council with the second look. Planning, abatements, annexation, everybody but Board of Works. I think someone else here this evening will make the point, the Board of Works is completely handpicked by the mayor. This mayor did not pick that board, but they are handpicked by the mayor. I don't think that there's any problem with the fiduciary of the city also looking at these contracts. So I don't see why this has become such a big problem. If I understand that this might make it more difficult, Board of Works needs twice a month, we need once a month. I give Pete all the props, mayor, the mayor and plan, all the props in the world, because in the last year, he has called more executive sessions and involved us more with what's even going on in this city than in the last three years combined. He's let us know what's going on and we have not been out in the dark about things that are coming up. I feel like if there was something urgent that any of you needed our approval on, we would, we would call an executive meeting. You're talking about Board of Works has one more meeting a month in us. If we need to have another session, we'll have another session, we'll do it, because again, we get paid to do this. I personally do not want to make any of your calls. I think you guys do a phenomenal job, all of you. It's just about us knowing what the heck is going on, we're signing off on what you know. So I want to make sure I get a little notes. I mean, I would absolutely love to hear how you all think it is going to make it more difficult for you and tell you that that would not be our desire to make anything more difficult for you. Just for us to have a second look at what's going on, Board of Works is still going to be the purchasing agency. We just want a second look, like every other board, like every other commission in the city, that's it.
I mean, I think, you know, the city overall, I think we kind of lead the way on transparency. So commendable thing to the council and all the boards and stuff. So yeah, I mean, everything that Board of Works does is public meeting, everything's kept on file with the treasurer's office and the members of public. At any time, I would like to see a contract, have a contract taken, your seat, it's all public record. Everything's done open when we do bids, they come in sealed, we literally open it up at the meeting. Uh, so there's, everything's public and transparency, and I'm a huge proponent of the way that has been done. So I mean, to your point, as far as the contracts and so forth. You can call David at ten o'clock and you have a contract, probably email to you at ten fifteen. And if they have any questions, then, you know, feel free to ask them, so.
And that's great, but we would still have no power. Even if we had, even if we sold something a contract we didn't want, we would still have no power. Where what I'm saying is every other board and commission in the city comes to council for the final say, with the exception of.
Right, and that's how, so as part of this, I reached out to our Navy communities and every community does it how we. In fact, one community, their Board of Works approves all the points to the council. So we're not reinventing the wheel, state board of accounts, obviously, that's what we're doing because they come all the time. We are following the way every community does it. I think it's worked very well. I think department heads know, sometimes they have to move quick, they know what they have in their budget, they present it and as you might hear, sometimes it's, you leave the Board of Works and you don't make the order because it moves that fast. This was in place, we wouldn't have the ability to do that, so. And that's some of the things I get questions on, like I really don't know the answers. So appreciate it.
Um, yeah, I think to Scott's point, the contract that is real general are the attorney's contracts. And I think if you could tighten that up, we could have the billing is the same, it's very general. What is under retaining, what is not, how is that built? I think that's a situation that, I mean, Mark Schweitzer came on with twenty years ago, tried to, you know, as did, you know, Rudson, Scott, and we've gone down the line to try and see if we can get that a little bit more tight for the county. I think those are the contracts, and we've talked about it this entire council. That's the concerning contract, the other contracts, I think in general, the Board of Works did a great job. And I think the problem is, is we are the fiduciary body and we are voted. That's very different than a board. We are voted, so my job, our job on the council is to represent tax pay. We are fiduciary, we're at bug stops here. Everything's done, it flows back to us. Now the appointments, there is some representation of council on different commissions, but for the most part, a mayor gets to appoint those votes, which is fine, that's the way cities do it, they try and balance Republicans and Democrats, but it's a point. They're not elected, they're not sole purpose to represent the tax pay, and that's what we do. We don't do hiring, we don't do firing, we look at a budget, we are solely representing the tax pay. And that's why we are an elected official, which gives us more power. So what I would like is to be able to see that, my background's not in attorney. So when you say, oh, it's going to take more time, well, you know, we would refer that to us prepared, go outside. But I think for the most part, the contract runs, I think if you get the contracts, the attorney's tight, where the billing is the same, I think that's where the water runs for me. And so I guess I'm trying, and the rest of the council always tries to represent the tax pay. And I think that Board of Works appointment, I think there's two councilmen, I think there's three on the board. One, okay, say one, and that's, and that's optional, that's appointed by the mayor, that's not signed by the council. So when you have these, Board of Works, very, very powerful board, they work hard, they do a great job. But again, the bite of the apple should come back to the council on contracts over twenty five thousand, so. That's all I want to say.
Anyone else on the council?
I also feel strongly that this ordinance needs tweaking, we tweaked it for a while, we looked at it. We, I believe, heard from city departments in twenty nineteen, they made some adjustments to make it work a little more smoothly from administrative standpoint. Again, this is not to pick on anybody or any other department. This is because we have been called to accountability. We spoke with members of the State Board of Accounts, who are here for our audit, which was fine, which was good. But we were told that we should be looking at these again, so regardless of what other cities do or other, other towns do, we had people from State Board that said to several of our members of council, you are, you are missing it here and you're responsible, and if you don't know what's going on, you're still responsible. So all we're asking for is a look at large contracts. I don't care about the five hundred dollars for referee fees or the, or the whatever, we're not talking about that. We approve those things, in fact, I think we have some of those tonight, don't matter. There are pasties coming in to us where we get to look at them, we get to see what's going on. But those big contracts that go for the Board of Works are seldom brought back to us. And we are wanting to see those for final approval, and I don't think that's a lot to ask. So there may be some miscommunication as far as what might to accomplish here. And so I would have to agree with Councilwoman Stokes and Dresga, that there's some important transparency issues here and, and we're not looking to give anybody any trouble, we just want to hold up our end of our job. And this feels like part of our job when the state board.
Well, one thing we know about the State Board of Accounts is they're very thorough, very methodical, and they tell you what to say. You guys know more than that. But like, yes, it's never, ever, ever been raised in any audit. There's been during the official audit, there's been a conversation back and forth, it's never even been brought up. Hey, just as a side note, maybe you guys want to serve that, or something like that, or unless, am I right?
No, and everything that they've, you know, told us, I didn't hear it from the auditors. But everything that they did tell us, we tried to perform the corrective action, we took action to correct it, you know.
Right, so, sorry, so as part of that, so I, because I knew that was, I didn't know, so I don't know what I asked. I went to the State Board of Accounts, the lawyer, attorney there, and she gave me a nice response, a lot of it's written like a lawyer. But basically, her short answer is no, they can't change who the purchasing agent is or appoint themselves. I know that tonight you're not looking to change it, you're looking for oversight. But her, this, the opinion from Ice Miller back in nineteen and a half, I wanted them to do another one, maybe there's some changes in the state laws since then, now their opinion is, they would write contracts, state law. So I think we're not in a rush and we're always good about what are the rules, let's follow, right? So my suggestion, even though there's so many questions across the department, is that we, we take a look at this, we have rules in place that we set, which is, let's send it to the ordinance. Let's have discussions, you guys can come, ask lawyers' questions, ask the ordinance community questions, how they affect their department. And maybe there are some, oh, I didn't think, I didn't think it would affect me like that. Or maybe they'll have some, you know what, the council might, you know what, I didn't think that that actually would be, how do we? But I think just trying to, let's do this now, so many legal and rigorous questions from the city, I have questions. I think we improve all of these steps.
I appreciate what you said, but with one council member up here that is for this, that will definitely not be here in two months, I don't want to do that, because what will happen is we'll push that ordinance, no, that's not a good way, no, we'll push it, I want it to do in January. She's not here, so now I'd rather do it now. I appreciate what you said, but, and I agree with you, but now that that little time left in here.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking, we have rule in place that we follow, and that's a, that's a good rule, and it was a clean type ordinance, like we have these other ones on the agenda. But this, there's a lot of questions about it, and like I said, they may have, like, you know, how does that affect the change, or does it affect the change? What might affect an emergency situation that's not addressed, that we need to do this fifty thousand dollars, hire this contractor now to do this, prepare. That doesn't address this. Board of Works can do it, but you guys got to wait until it gets to the council approval, how does that, just stuff like that. I think it's prudent analysis, leaders of the community, to be responsible and get it done right, if that's what the council chooses.
Well, I, I appreciate them, what you're saying, but this is the second time this ordinance has come. We deferred it last month, we were open to any questions to the council and or our attorney, we got none. So, I mean, to say that I, in the past, that's been kind of the policy, is you have questions, you know, talk about it prior to the meeting, see if we can answer that, and that's been policy of attorneys. If you've got a burning question, ask before the meeting, then resolve after, take it up at council time. So I guess I'm surprised that we've heard nothing, this is the second time this ordinance is, is trying to come through and we've heard nothing from anybody for the last couple of weeks, so.
Hey, mayor, can I take it?
Yeah, let me just make one for them. So we did, we did do that, we had a department head meeting and I called with Attorney Nichols and Attorney Kudnuski there, because I wanted them, the department, to be able to ask their questions, and they were great questions, and they didn't even have the answers. But we didn't, we didn't have that. No, I didn't contact that department. So I think we did our best, and we started.
You know, I've gone back and forth, I don't want to address this, this will be, you know, position of anger is, because there is, there is a lot of anger. And it may not be your intention to go back and say, well, this is it, but I do have an issue with how this came about. I was the one argued against it four years ago, almost four years ago to today. So four years is good, until we get right here again and then something gets thrown up. So now I talked to some council members that said, we didn't know this was going to be on the agenda. I've got three, I can tell you right now, had no idea, showed up on the agenda without a question. Now, at the same meeting in August, we were told, well, State Board of Accounts came to us, told us they want us to do this. Now, look, we're in your defense, they came back at the same time and said, you know, this is a big thing, we're going to defer it to October for two months. And somewhere in there, we are going to reach out to you. Do us, the department has discussed what that is, not one, not one phone call, anybody on the state council. Fire chief, not me, not the chief, not Terry's Cora, nobody. Why? You want to be transparent, why, why do we have to go ask questions, you, you said you were coming to us, so why would we do that? Scott, we talked about the mobile forefront, this is not, maybe doesn't come off right, you said you've been here great, I've been here for seven, I think I've been the longest in the department. Sat in the mayor's office, sat in the tech department, I sat in the pace department, I got all these people that are one hundred percent against this. I have all the people here in this room, maybe not Pat, but everybody here is against it, why? Why are we, but, hold on.
Tonight, tonight, just.
Is there thirty five thousand people in the city?
Point of where, point of where?
Mary, please, Mary.
Mary.
No. And let out, that's where.
Look, I've got a little bit here, so hang on, I'm showing my frustration. You know, I take a little bit of offense when you come and just say, I can't, I can't get contracts. You go to that man's office, that man, and his office is fantastic. It's fantastic, you can walk down there, any minute, within three minutes, you will have that contract. My eight-year-old can walk down there and say, Mr. Dave, can I get a copy of that contract for Dave Nick? There it is, so there's no reason not to be. Mary, we have all our meetings online, you can watch the meetings, you can get minutes, you have representation. You have one of the best, probably the best, most qualified council members sitting on the Board of Works right now. And that man, Andrew Harris, that is your most qualified, and he's a banker, that is a banker, so undermining what he votes on. It, it, it's pathetic, it really is. So going back, I'm going to continue. Now, Carol, tell me, you represent the tax, every one of us does here too. I get paid for forty hours a week, I work seven, fire chief takes calls, chief packet, every one of us is responsible for the tax. So I take offense to that. Every one of us does something for not us, they're away from our families, we're away, we do this too, I get it, you're like, we're appointed. Well, well, we all, we all should have the same agenda, we really should, you know, making sure that the city does well. Dawn, I got an issue, when you said, hey, it's about the power, what do you, what?
I didn't say.
You most certainly did, you most certainly.
Accidentally did, yes.
So it's not about.
And what, can you, what sentence I?
You said you don't have the power, you don't have the power, it's not about.
No, I said we don't have the power, if, if, if someone, if we have a problem with a contract, we don't have the power to do anything about it. It's already approved.
And what's, what, what has changed now? Now, you did come on a premise here in August, and said, this is not, this does not have anything to do with legal. Yeah, it does, you just approved it, and then you finally came out and said, well, yeah, you know, it really does have to do with it. So now we're on.
From day one, that would be about that.
You should have shouted that from day one, you guys did, and it's all set up.
I did, I pressed it when I looked before.
That was a, we're talking, we are.
And I mentioned last month, first one.
Last month, not, not at all, it's been last month, one hundred percent, it says a lot for me.
So I have, I know, because you guys and Jenny and Diane, you guys probably lead the way on quick purchases, everything you got going on. Some of them are over twenty five, I get it, all the time, can you approve veto or whatever, because we got to pay the vendor for it, right, for upcoming. So I think that was one of the concerns is, I can still approve, but we got to wait for the council. And we do that all the time, right? There's money that comes right back in. No, so they'll come, we have, like, part of the contract, they will come. You know, for whatever purchase, Adam, I thought his, besides the events at Bulldog Park. It's a totally different world, every year, or this year, all you guys, Terry, services. Because of the nature of the vehicle purchasing, and you all, you all went to the Board of Works through legal. We approved it and you had to order it right then, because they say, we'll hold the cards for twenty-four hours and they're gone. It's a whole different world when that was required. Under this, you'd have lost them all, there's no way there without two weeks or thirty days. Currently, I don't know.
My personal opinion. So can I get a point of order, I think, so that this discussion can be in order, we should raise our hands and be recognized by the chair. When the chair recognizes that, that person, then that person can speak.
Okay.
That's, and then another procedural matter, typically this council, the twenty years that I've been there, also council in Dresga, council in Dresga. Whenever there's been an issue that's been contentious or that requires a lot of discussion, it's always, it just doesn't appear on an agenda. It, it goes through the committee process, just like it does in the state house and our legislature. So it's something to consider, we're not just trying to kick the hand down, down the aisle, but whenever you have something that requires a lot of discussion, you have to weigh on both sides, the proper way to do this, the structure, it's not mandatory, but that's the way. And then I'll just be on motion. But I just think that everyone should be recognized.
Okay, yeah, points well taken, I'll, thank you.
Can I continue? I appreciate it, and again, this is not. You know, we show frustration here, Chad, I've reached out to you a couple of times, I. You know, we're not above the, you know, extra layer, and again, I actually created a slide just to show, you know, anybody at home or what we go through on a day-to-day basis. And I'll see if I can share this, Mary, if you can. Cool. There it goes, it's on this one behind you. So in our opinion here, you approve our budget, you don't, you work out the budget that you do, we generally, DLG, it comes back somewhere in the first quarter, says we can do this. On a Board of Works approval on a contract, I have to do a Board of Works request. After the Board of Works, five-member board, which includes somebody from your city council, I'm going to approve that. I do a purchase entry. I do a purchase entry for that, goes to departmental approvals, since it's over five thousand dollars, goes to the mayor. The bookkeeping takes that and approves it. The clerk or secondary bookkeeping member has to go back and approve it, as we go back and prove. Now, now, just now, I'm able to purchase that. I didn't even got there, I just got the approval to purchase. I have an invoice entry, we have to do another departmental approval, we have to go back to the bookkeeping, we have to go to the clerk for approval, we have to go to, and then finally, we go to the city council where you approve. Again, at the end of the day, you created the budget, you told us to work with it, this, this dollar bond. We go back and go through all these steps, twelve steps, and then we come back. And you approve it, and overwhelmingly, over my seventeen years sitting in here, I've probably sat more meetings, maybe, than anybody, but there has been no questions. Maybe there's been questions on the side, but they have always been approved. So, why is that? So, now, you just throw back, okay, well, what, who cares if there's thirteen approvals? I'm thinking, why? Because it's the time, what the mayor talked about. I can't do stuff, my department, Terry can't do stuff, and I'll let him talk down the stuff that is. Forty-five days after a Board of Works proof, we will get nothing done. Nothing. My net used to be sixty, ninety days, it's not. Best-case scenario, it's thirty, fifteen has become regular. Our homework there, that's our IT manager now, we do security stuff. On staff, we need Board of Works approval, Board of Works, you can say you can have a meeting every two, two weeks, Board of Works is too slow. It already is too slow, it's inefficient. Seeing the nodding heads of every department manager, it's already inefficient. You need to have them every week, you need to do them on demand, I know that's not what will happen, but that's what we need. So, we go back now, we have a security thing on Microsoft, on whatever, and we need to act and act quick. Jenny did a turf project at, at the sportsplex. As soon as that contract was signed, that was brought over, and the only reason why that got done on time was because we took it there that day. I waited forty-five days to get that, an additional forty-five, we don't get it done, we just lost out on tens of thousands of dollars. That doesn't even bring in the change orders that we have. What constitutes a change order? You know, going back to security stuff, you know, hey, this needs to be done, Mr. Nichols, and I say, hey, David, this threat's out here, we need to do this, get on Board of Works, get it done. Boom, it's done, we're acting, we're moving forward. I waited forty-five days, that's forty-five days of vulnerability, I'll just put it this way again. Nothing against having oversight, nothing against, just name it what it is. Ask the schools how well that worked out. Honestly, it's nothing against Pat, it's nothing against anybody, I don't think anybody cares about having more oversight. We wouldn't put our meetings online and TV to watch us look like doofuses up here, and me right now talking to you like this, but it, it is what it is. You can go back and you can watch every meeting, you can see every meeting live, you can comment on everything. I'm telling you, this does not work. It doesn't work, and it's, it's crummy how it got here. Again, not all council knew about it, it didn't go through ordinance committee, committee like, why, why? Why, why doesn't follow the process that everything else that we did, what's different about this? Okay, now, legal fees are to buy, we got questions up. Okay, fine, let's fix it. Collectively, let's go back and, it's not wait four years, let's look and talk to that man, who's a really good man right there, fantastic. You got another one right there, sitting in that corner right there, it's fantastic, Pat, you're a great guy, too, I know Pat was assistant city attorney when I was up here in the mayor's office. I think everybody here has the best interest of the city. Why are, why are we playing these shell games, moving and not talking about really what's the problem? I think I'm gonna defer to Terry, because when you're looking at these departments, I can go on, 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 on why these cause issues. I can go back to, hey, I need to make a change on our tech stuff, or you got new officers that are starting right now, well, it's a change order. Was that all under here? Well, we don't know, nobody told us, nobody reached, nobody had discussion. Like, I get phone calls all night, every night. Probably, probably would go to divorce, I didn't have for this city. So, having you make a phone call, so you don't have all those issues, is not a big deal. Oh, it shouldn't have to be us to reach out on a policy that affects us this much. You know, I'm gonna send out to Terry has, again, hands it down, probably biggest concern with this, and the most effect to the residents of the city. And again, I'm just gonna pass it to Terry, I'm happy to answer questions. It's not good for the city, it's not good for my department, it's not good for Diana, it's not good for Jenny, it's not good for, I can go down the line, every one of you will say something, so why don't you listen?
Terry, did you want to chime in on this area?
Thank you. I manage five departments in the city. And they all operate on what if. Those of them run twenty-four-seven, while we're all sleeping. And that what if can come at two in the morning. And decisions have to be made. Not only at that time, but even with Doug doing a road. And he got a hundred and fifty thousand in the road, he peels that back. Now, we got a total recon of that road, it could end up being a quarter million dollars, change order, damn. Sewer projects, there's always change orders. Lift stations, lift stations, a pump is anywhere from thirty thousand dollars to fifty. And the services that go with it sometimes to get it installed and reprogrammed. Now, if a lift station goes down, which it hasn't, and would, since I took over, it's eighty thousand dollars. You don't wait for a purchase on that. That happens at two in the morning, and you make a phone call, and you get that equipment en route. Because I don't think any of you want to hand out thirty thousand buckets and toilet paper to the residents of Crump Point because lift stations are down. I can't operate like that. Trucks, as the mayor said, a lot of our vehicles were purchased by word of mouth to Terry White. Hey, I have this, I have this, I have this, would you like it? In a blink of an eye, take it to the Board of Works. And lo and behold, we have trucks. Materials for water and sewer. Our meters are cash registers, and that's been difficult, because, uh, when you order them, they're not, we had to wait over a year, and I think a quarter, to get meters. That's how we make money, our meters. So, sometimes you have to go, well, I'm gonna spend sixty grand on meters. Is this all gonna be held up when I try and run this department? Brass, that's very expensive, valves, water main parts, and then Terry shop with his equipment, not to mention the wastewater treatment plant. That's another twenty-four-seven deal there, and that thing breaks quite often. You gotta make decisions, because we can't do without a lot of my purchases. I pride myself on how I spend money. You can ask my superintendents, I'm pretty stingy with it, I make the right decisions. And along with them, and my crew leaders, we've changed a lot of things, so we don't have the expenditures we used to have. We've got a lot of things in place. We've got everything on generators and stuff, but it costs money to get it where it is today, and I'd like to make sure we keep that, we strive to even do better than that. And if I can't spend money, I'm gonna be dead in the water, and we're gonna have issues. About all I have to say.
I think along those lines, when this first came out, as we were talking about with Doug, we're visiting a road project. And we were talking about this, it's a change order, um, in excess of twenty-five thousand, obviously, it's a purchase and service by a bank. Is that what, what's, what is what be applicable? I said, no, and I'm not really sure, but I'll be discussing what it is. Uh, and we have a road project, the road's closed, we don't know how to pull off that, or that has to sit still for a couple of weeks until we can get that twenty-five thousand dollar change order approved. For now, to the justice. Last year, we had some issues with change orders, that's all been rectified. And I had next to any issue I could have. We've definitely had a most common wealth in our asset, uh, if a charge of. Uh, but to the point, roads, we have enough to sit, close, no workers, or tell the council, if the change order is even applicable to ordinance, which we were hardly even sure, right? I don't even know, it's a good question. Uh, so I think that just goes along. By our own procedures, with the ordinance, all of us can discuss that. Um, and maybe the council, anyone that took an appointment, tweak this, or whatever the case is, with the legal input settled, and city legal team, Ice Miller, State Department Council, I mean, that. I can be legal and, and work on everything together, that's true. It's working. Anybody else want to?
No, I just want to say, I mean, first and foremost, I, I appreciate, I mean, I know you're saying that he should have called you, I wish someone would have called me. I mean, I'm, I take everybody's phone calls, calls, no one called it, if you talk to a few of us on here, I'm assuming you talked to the ones that you knew were gonna vote no.
You put the ordinance on the agenda, without talking to anybody.
Well, that's not true.
That is one hundred percent true, you did not talk to anybody before you put the ordinance on the agenda, it showed up. You may have talked to a few of your council people, but you do this.
And I talked to ours, but not every ordinance goes to ordinance committee, that is actually not true, not everyone.
I didn't say that.
What we've been talking about.
But you have the ordinance that affects immensely the city departments, and we have to know that you're thinking about putting an ordinance on, then we should be reaching out to the departments.
First and first of all, then, this was put on three, four years ago, right? And it was voted on and then vetoed. If you think for a minute that I don't think the same thing is going to happen, you're wrong, I know that that's what's gonna happen, all right? This was a point that some of us were trying to make, that yes, the public does expect their elected officials to keep track of things. And not just the things that, that come to us in the boards and commissions that we are supposed to come, they're supposed to come to us, but every, I mean, I'm out knocking on doors right now. Don't you believe that most people in the city actually thinks we do approve contracts? Because they do, there, maybe not the city councils you reached out to, but there are city councils in this country that do approve, that do approve contracts, so that's not a.
And this one hundred percent actually.
Yes, and so that's not true, that most of the people in the city think we do that already, you know, that's just from social media, just from social media. I, I know, I know that, and the other thing is, I don't want to take, what I don't want to do is spend more time. So, guys, let's just say we got the votes to, to pass this without a veto. I, I'm not, we're not gonna go into some legal mumbo jumbo here, and make your guys' life even harder, that was not the goal here. And I spoke to everyone before it actually showed up in a meeting, I called everybody and talked to everyone. Did I talk to them before I asked Pat, before Pat and I discussed it? No, I talked to a handful of them that were interested in putting it back on from four years ago. But before we actually showed up in a meeting, I talked to every single person.
Nice to have the, the ordinance.
Good.
Um, so, um, good, a lot of good points, we are the, we all agree on that. Uh, we're considered a third-class city in the state of Indiana. We have the ability to become a second-class city, which is a population of thirty-five thousand and over. All the cities, all third-class cities, and virtually all second-class cities have a Board of Works that approve all contracts. Erie, Hammond, East Chicago, Lake Station, Ober, Portage, Albury, Silverport, Michigan City, just recently at the AM conference, and we got to bring out the council people, and I asked. But anyone that's a second or third-class city, it helps out, it's more first-class city. Uh, how many of you have Board of Works that approve all the contracts? Everybody's hand went up. Uh, this legislation, I'm not able to support it, it usurps the balance of power. Uh, it's, it's far sweeping, it's, it's very impactful, it's detrimental, it upsets the balance of power between the executive branch and the legislative branch. It reduces, it pretty much reduces a mayor to a figurehead, he has responsibility, he or she has responsibility, but no authority. Because everything, everything, everything changes. This will have the more, the way, the way resolution, the way we're on its streets now, is that the Board of Works will still approve everything, and then council will, the second look means, according to way of the ever, that they will have to reapprove everything over that quote, statement. This, it, it, it's not, uh, it's not the way I think the founding fathers of the state of Indiana intended this how-to-run government. It, it takes, prior to ninety-eight, ninety-eight, there was no Board of Works because there wasn't a major. It was a population of definitely maybe twelve thousand, and I, I think that the only cities that do not have Board of Works are populations of five thousand and under, I don't know other states where. And this, this has worked so far. So, if the, if the question is the attorney's base, I, I believe, I think we're on that now. Uh, I'm not, I don't know, other council people have received any data, the, the attorney's fees may be hiding, may not be hiding, I don't know, I don't have the data to see, to compare, to see how everyone else's attorney's fees compared to ours, and what their cases were, and what our cases were, because every case is different, that's kind of a subjective thing, it's, it's hard to measure. But, uh, maybe, I, I, I think this, this can be addressed, but not in this way. I, I think that's, uh, that's all. Oh, one other thing, uh, I had a, I read the opinion about State Department Council Attorney, they said that it was not, it was not proper to, to do a. Uh, Ice Miller had an opinion, they said, it's not the right thing to do. I, I know that we have different attorney's opinions, but I'm not able to support, I, I, I feel comfortable supporting Indiana State Department Council Attorney, their own attorney, and I feel comfortable supporting Ice Miller's opinion. Uh, the city of Erie tried to do this two years ago, unapoloitously, and the court said, no, this, this, this isn't gonna be supported. So, uh, that, that's kind of where I'm at. Unfortunately, it would have been probably better to do this, and still be done at this point. Those were my thoughts.
Uh, I don't want to shut out those that come to us. Throw it to Joe, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one more thing. Um, some of you are assuming that the first time you heard about it was the first time this was discussed in a committee format. Many of these things have been discussed in the former administration's office, and we didn't get a lot of progress. So, the next step was to try to bring it forward a little bit more, with a little bit of push, to get some answers. I'm sorry that for those of you who have, there was no intention for this to become anything personal, seriously, there was nothing about any of the department has. Um, we knew there was pushback four years ago, and we thought we were making some new roads to change that, the amount could be changed, that makes the difference. Certainly, the whole world's more expensive now, twenty-five thousand dollars maybe every contract, and not just a few, a face thing. However, I do, I do think it would have been nice, maybe two months, I'm saying, there may be questions asked, there may be questions that need to be answered. And there were people talking about, and the things I'm sorry, and some of you didn't feel like they were in the blue. Um, all the council people had talked more or less to each other, so this has been going on, now we're more than three times. Um, but there was some expectation, I think, on my part, and I'm sorry if that was wrong, that department has would reach out if there were concerns, because I made the point of speaking out on this a little bit, saying what some of ours were, and why we're bringing it forward. So, there were very strong feelings and, and some issues. I don't know what I don't know. You guys run your departments, you run them well, you have this twelve-step process, we don't go through that. I'm not gonna pretend to know that I know Jenny's job inside and out, I don't. I trust you with the job, but I don't know it inside and out, so if this is gonna be a huge burden to you, I would listen to, I would listen to, well, if we had to help this, we had to. I would be interested, however, all of these lift stations breaking down, and all of a sudden, we got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of road expense today. What happens with those? Do we have authority within the department, you're not getting it right now, to just sign those change orders? I mean, do we have, do we have that kind of financial authority that it doesn't have to go to anybody else? That would surprise me, I know that doesn't work in most corporations, cities are different. But there has to be a method to address emergency things anyway, and I don't think that happened so very often. And I don't think that happened so very often, a lift station hasn't come down, praise God, in your tenure, we don't want it to. We don't wanna speak to that, um, in a negative way. But there have got to be ways to address this, trying to bring things to the mayor to sign off on and whatever, so there are, there are protocols in place, and I'm not sure that monthly council meetings are a handful of ongoing contracts, contracts that are anticipated. We don't, we don't see everything, we're looking at, at the larger amounts. And we are looking to see, and someday if I could get a copy of the attorney contracts, I would very much like to do that, because that, before you got in office, I had asked for those multiple times and was always put off, that I could not see it. So this is one of the things that, you know, this may not be the way you would see this handled, but we have had, we have tried to handle this, some of us have been for a long time, have tried to handle this in a quieter way, in a more committee way, in a, in a, uh, less in-your-face, if you will, way, and have not gotten proper. So I don't wanna be here four years ago to today, but that's all my experience, yes. So I would appreciate that fast contract copy, um, we had been told in the past, I personally have been told in the past that I do not have a copy. So this is news to me, that I can get a copy of any contract like that. Um, that was news to me, and I've been here twenty, almost four years, eighteen years. So, um.
I would like for us to speak up, all the attorney contracts in the city. And I want to say again, that Mayor Leon has been far more transparent with everything that's going on and sharing everything with the council that was not shared before, and talk about coming to meetings, not knowing what was going on, that happened a lot to us. We're supposed to be knowing what's in the know, we would.
Why are you saying me up?
No, I'm just saying, here, I'm talk, because you were talking about how people came here and they didn't know what was going on or what on the agenda, that, that happened prior to Mayor Leon a lot. So I understand how you're feeling, and I agree with absolutely everything you were upset about, this was not to upset anyone or make anyone uncomfortable. And honestly, I wish one of you, because we put, there's a lot of ordinances around here, no one, I mean, people call us when they have an issue with them, whether it's the community or any of you or the mayor or other council members, nobody called me, none of you called me.
But isn't it surprising that the department and the entire city of Crown Point, this is a issue?
No, that's not surprising at all, I completely expected that.
Well, yeah, I know, cause you said, let's have it, so I think you knew there was gonna be some controversy here, so why wouldn't you reach out to us?
Be, because I knew it was already coming, I knew it was already coming, and none of you wanted to call, so I figured you wanted to do it in a public forum. And I'm absolutely fine with that, I'm absolutely fine that you wanted to do it in a public forum. I think you made wonderful points, I think it's, it's all, I don't know if this should go to ordinance committee, it can. I'm not sure Andrew White didn't mention it going to ordinance committee two months ago, or why we didn't bring it there two months ago, and just now you're mentioning it should go there. Um, but we can do any of that, we can do any of that that anyone wants to do. I think if you start with all of us getting a copy of the attorney's fee, that's the biggest problem that we have, that's why it was brought up four years ago, that's why it was brought up again. And more is right, those things were not readily available to us in the past, and I'm so glad they were not.
Um, I mean, I think we've all sat up here and talked about how, you know, we're the fiscal body of the city, and I'm pretty sure we all agree on this. My take, I thought to keep on this, is we are the fiscal body, right, we're, we're gonna sit up here and vote on some budget stuff tonight. We're a thirty-thousand-foot view fiscal body of the budgets, we're not day-to-day operations, we're not micromanagers of these departments, right? So we make sure that everybody works within their allotted budget, as long as they're seeing a lot of budget, we approve. Fiscally, we've been responsible with what we do with the budget, we operate very fast, budget proposed by the mayor, voted on by the council. Okay, so I, I think fiscally we are doing our job. I would say the second thing is that it, it's like we're throwing the baby out of the bath while I'm at this. But, but just like Craft and Ordinance just said, we wanna see the attorney's contracts, and that's it, that's two ordinance. Department heads are fine, we wanna see the attorney's contracts, we basically solved, came up here for, and the rest of this is all mute, there's no ordinance committee, there's no meeting, it's just, we wanna see the, the, the contracts for the attorneys, which, no, for Treasure of Medicine says we can have it at a moment's notice. But the irony is a loss to me that we all appear to agree that we're not attorneys, and that we probably couldn't look at those contracts in the billing and figure out what is in retain or what isn't. So we would have to hire Pat or another attorney and pay attorney's fees to look at attorney's fees. So I mean, there's some irony to what we're trying to do there, when I think we just go, if, if this is really not about this, which, I mean, the way I read this ordinance, it, it appears to me that any contract that has the potential of twenty-five thousand or more at any point during the calendar year, I gotta think almost every contract we do has the potential of twenty-five thousand. So, I mean, I'm just looking at, you know, we become an event city, right? So everything that these guys do, so I mean, any, you know, a beer truck, pop trucks, the, you know, the vendor trucks. I'm sure every one of those wind up being twenty, has the potential of being twenty-five thousand in the calendar year. So every event, the way I read this, is you would need to come in for an approval that says, we're gonna have another contract for this event, you know, for car cruises next Thursday. So we need to go ahead and get an approval from you guys to say that this has a potential of twenty-five thousand or greater. Now, that's the way, that's the way I'm reading, if I'm reading it wrong, Pat, let me know.
That's the way I was told to write it.
So, I mean, I, I think that we've, we've heard from everybody, and I mean, honestly, it's, I mean, I think it's just been brought very clearly, I think we should be clear with the public, we talk about being transparent about what we do. The transparency of this ordinance is, we wanna see the attorney's contracts, that they wanna see how they're billed, if they're billed with entertainment. We're gonna have to pay somebody to figure that out, because none of us are gonna know, Pat, I'm quite sure you're not gonna work on all that provo, so there's gonna be some, there's gonna be some added charges either with you or with the outside, outside legal counsel on that to look at it. But I think it takes every argument, discussion we've had, and we just go, in my twelve years up here, I know of one time that we had one hiccup we thought with the change order at board of works. And I think everybody, as everybody agree, we all know of those with a paving contractor that was here for one season, right? Subbed all the work out, there was one sub that came in with a pretty astronomical upcharge. We caught it, the contractor doesn't work here, you know what I mean? So I think in the last twelve years, we've seen it one time at board of works with somebody that just kind of like, wow, where did that come from? So, I mean, to me, I, I don't know why we're, why we're debating on this for the, for every city department, and the thing we really wanna do is just see legal fees are paid.
Yeah, I think, um, that is, I think it's looking at maybe more defined contract with the attorneys, so we have a better idea of that. Um, I think this has been a great discussion, I'm gonna try to sound, um, slightly like that. And, uh, I did not know that we could do that, to change the contract, if you wanna alter a contract, is that only the responsibility of the board of works? So once you look at a contract, if you wanna make change, if you can find it more, make it more detailed, does that have to come through the board of works or can council have input on that to the board of works? Cause I think that's been the obstruction, is that if you look at it, and you think, oh yeah, that's not real, I need more detail on that, and we're specifically, uh, can I, can I change that, or is that squiggly, all contracts are put together by?
It's board of works, not that you can't have input, the board of works, of course you can always go over there and talk to board of works, okay? But you can dictate and, uh, change, board of works does contract here.
I'm not gonna be, uh, denounce here, just a couple of things to be across, right? I have more questions I do have concerns, I was provided the ordinance in our department just last week. Um, I've said I've been in pretty much every council meeting since I took over, and I was at the last, um, ordinance committee meeting, uh, nothing was ever brought up there, um, when it was heard, it's last month's meeting. As much information I have is what's on the, like, open, what, at least, you don't get provided anything that's on the agenda unless it's, it's all right. So just reading this, I couldn't even tell you that involves me, so the concern got brought up, what it actually meant. So, um, we were not given the opportunity to present what it actually was, um, to be able to ask questions, and I had a ton of questions. Uh, Ryan and I, we work in emergency services, stuff happens twenty-four seven, holidays, weekends, and, you know, we don't have, board of works is already slow. Um, it's, it's too slow, and to add a forty-five day, uh, addition to that, it's gonna, it's literally going to cease operations. For us, and it sounds like for every department in the city, um, you know, one of my questions is, is this twenty-five thousand dollars collectively to a vendor in the city, or is it per purchase, per, per, per purchase?
Well, no, collectively within a year period, that's like Chad was talking about, if it's, if it's, if that contract is expected twenty-five thousand dollars or more within a, a year's period of time, uh, then you would, the ordinance would apply to it. Okay, now, if, back, yeah, you, you had, you may have a single vendor that does separate twenty-five, separate contracts for, for different things that wouldn't be collective in that case.
Does that answer? Mix a little bit more work, yeah. Um, and you know, we, we're saying that the board of works is still the purchasing agency, but the way I read this is that it's over this twenty-five thousand dollar mark, it has to come back for city council in the forty-five days. You're looking, everyone's saying you wanna look at it, but ultimately you're voting on it, right?
Yes.
And what happens if board of works approves something and council denies and just gets that in water?
Yes.
Ultimately, the coun, the council is the purchasing agency.
Yes.
Um, and again, the forty-five days is not, is that, that I hear?
Well, the ultimate thing, not purchasing agencies is still the board of works, it's just that the council does have the final say on specific contracts over twenty-five thousand dollars.
But there's no appeal or anything, you, you need something, and the, the board of works approves it, city council denies it, it's, there's no, it's, right?
Yes.
So I don't wanna, council heads, I also don't wanna omit, uh, attorney, high record, D H, or, yeah. Just the last thing, to me, it seems like this, this, uh, ordinance is served in using a hack song. George, David, or Pat, wanna? I wanna, I may omit you guys.
You know, I, you know, just, I think it's a terrible idea, but, yeah. You can't, this thing has to be figured out, the chief just, the chief just hit right on the, uh, the most important point. So if the council says no, where are you at? Now we go back to the drawing board, get new bids, run it through the board of works, then to the council and hope it gets approved the second time. Yeah, how would, how would it seem to be? I would imagine the majority of contracts we have apparently are over twenty-five thousand.
And that's where my question, I, I, maybe I didn't understand what you said, Pat, the way I read it, it's collectively within a year over twenty-five thousand. There might be an agreement that we have with Motorola, I might lose twenty grand, PD uses a hundred, what if one day it flips and now we're going back? I'm saying over a year, pretty much everything, which is crazy to think about it, but every, you see, everything's crazy.
It's just like a practical standpoint, a lot of issues.
So, a couple of things up together here, number one, my first question is, what happens when the order works itself? Or does that happen?
If we say no to?
When you say no to, what, I'm assuming in all these years, that at some point a contract is on the board of works, you're like, um, this needs to go back to the drawing board.
Yeah, so there's times that, uh, either we, we can approve it because we know we want it, but we're not satisfied, either the legal department maybe or something that, that we want something changed in, so we could, uh, go ahead and approve it and label review. They don't have to come back to the board, so the quicker you can get that done, get it to the legal department, yep, that's what we want. So usually that takes potentially two weeks.
Does that happen prior to a meeting, or after?
Um, well, most of the time, because we communicate multiple times a day, so we know if they have questions, uh, talk about it, a lot of meetings, everything goes to the legal department, they have final say, yes, that's what, you know, this is what we want, so parts matter. Um, so, you know, we already have it pretty much hashed out before it comes. Sometimes things do change, or I don't think that's really what we discussed, and that's what the change, so, but to keep it moving, that's what we'll do. Uh, we'll make a motion to approve it with this change, pending that you review, so legal department knows, yep, that knows what the change is. So like I said, usually the next day or certainly within two days, this will be legal department to make sure.
Well, that it does sound like something that also happens, council, we've done that for things, but I think more importantly, I feel like now, um, and I'm sure Andrew knows the answer to this, that I feel like now there needs to be more board of works, you're telling me, or your departments in particular, yours too, that you, you need things quicker than every two weeks? Why are there more, any, more meetings every week then? Because I think you have two of the most important departments, just on a safety standpoint, in the city. Maybe we should be making, uh, an ordinance, a board of board of works needs every week.
Well, the chair of the council wants, so there have been occasions where board of works have, have added extra meetings or have changed the calendar, it's a very flexible calendar. And that's like, it's first under, sometimes they'll have, that there's some kind of a rule, this, so in order to accommodate it, if there's something pressing. So we've been able to, I think, haven't we been able to address your concerns pretty much?
May I speak?
Right now, I don't see a need for.
To your point, too, Carol, any contract that goes to board of works is reviewed by someone in the legal department, and there's been a lot of, hey, this is the chamber contract, and, you know, we go back, well, it's not the city's best interest, you need to get this changed, this man right here, and over that. So I'm going back and forth with the guy, what do you want me to do, this is one for Motorola, but, you know, there's always the look at that part, too. This is what, you know, it's generally how the clause of the state, that's just a, you know, uh, not appropriation, there's, there's stuff that goes in then. This legal department over, you know, years prior to probably is kind of this, this isn't the best interest of the city, I know there's a contract right now that we deferred because we didn't think it was in the best interest of going back and forth. Uh, so there is that dialogue, maybe it doesn't happen necessarily at a meeting, it doesn't happen very often, the honest issue that, that, no, this isn't our interest. By the time it's gotten there, it's vetted repeatedly, had conversations amongst an attorney, conversations with the executive, the department, to make sure this is right among, we don't bring anything to a board that we know is in the best interests. Even?
Hey, it's time for us to speak down. I would say, especially when I've been here tonight, reinforces, reinforces the opinions as exhibited by what documents and what opinions have been brought forward by, uh, the people that our legal department has consulted, which you have consulted. So it is without a doubt that I, David Nichols, city attorney for Crown Point, Indiana, for the past sixteen look at what has transpired here and what is being attempted to be foisted upon this city. I deem it to be legally inappropriate, as it has been so deemed by the state board of count and their attorney, Tina Mann. By attorney firm Vice Miller. by attorney firm Vice Miller in Indianapolis, who has been this city's attorney and has well served us for probably the past seventy-five years. And they made the same determination to determineation in twenty nineteen as they have this year, also by the court of appeals of the state of Indiana in two thousand and published opinion by the court of appeals of the state of Indiana in public session that involved the China Tan Shu Trustee's office and also an unpublished opinion from the city of Gary. So based upon the legal decisions that are in front of me and what I have heard here tonight, it leaves me only to one conclusion, that this ordinance has been proposed, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh eight dash two oh is not in legal form.
So I appreciate your reason for that staff and sort of the council, I agree. A lot of good discussion, points made, so I appreciate that. Turning back to the council.
Well, I, I would like to, based on this conversation, based on the fact that we now have some of the information that previously council people that asked for, council members that asked for, I would like to rescind my motion to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh eight dash twenty. And I would rescind my second, I think this has been productive, I think it's been a long discussion, but it's worthwhile. And I would like to make motions for move ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh eight dash twenty from the agenda.
May the vote first.
So I'm not listening.
Go ahead and say it.
I can't.
Motion or rescinds the motion, or the second rescinds the motion, it's rescinded. At this point, we just want to postpone indefinitely ordinance twenty twenty-three oh eight. You can always, you can always produce a new, a new ordinance at any time if you like.
Right, but, but when it's with, it, it rescinded, it should come off the agenda, because it's not decided upon in his ninety days, dog man, it's passed, it's or something like that, am I right?
I think, no, if it's rescinded, it's gone.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to.
Ninety days, that's a BCA approval.
Okay, okay.
It's rescinded, it's gone.
Okay, so there's no voice vote?
Well, like, well, there's still a ordinance here, in order to take it off the table, a motion to be ordered postponed indefinitely, a new motion can always be introduced, that it's more applicable to the discussion that was the medications are postponed. That's not a table. There's a difference between a table and a postponement.
Well, there is, the table is a depth.
No, postponement indefinitely, it's postponed indefinitely. Table is someone can bring it from the table and at any time in the future, as it's written.
What about just for move?
See, I do, you can, just move it.
Well, that's my question.
It's, no, it's there, it's just indefinite as to when it can be brought back, can be brought back, as opposed to a postponement or something that follows the furl, is, is to a certain date. It has to be preferred to a certain date. But it had, what Andrew's talking about, yeah, if you table it, it's tabled just indefinitely, but it's still there. And I don't know that that's what you want, if you want it still there, I would agree, table it. If you don't want it there anymore, and you want to withdraw this whole darn thing, then you just withdraw.
Yes, that was my motion.
I just want to get the coordinates, that is, just attorney, where I was.
Any second, any second.
Motion to withdraw the ordinance. Got a second? Any further discussion? Here, I don't know, David, send it by with that. I oppose. Motion passed. Number two, ordinance two zero two three dash zero nine two five, two thousand twenty-four salary ordinance. This is the same.
I'll move to adopt ordinance number twenty three oh nine from six.
Motion for adoption.
I'll second that.
Yes, second.
Hey, remember Chad Jeffrey?
Yes.
Council president, Don Stokes?
Yes.
Andrew Karas?
Yes.
Laura Sarmman?
Yes.
Carol Draska?
Yes.
Zach Ryan?
Yes.
And Scott Ward?
Yes.
All this.
Number three, ordinance two zero two three zero nine two six, this is the two thousand twenty-four salary ordinance. And officers employed that assistance for a private and institutional agency. Mayor established salary, this is also the same.
I'll move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh nine from six.
Motion for adoption, in a second. Two seconds, two seconds. Need further discussion on the motion? I do have one on that, Eric. Just as I was going through this, actually, last ordinance we talked about, right? I, I brought up, you know, we really are becoming quite intense, you know, with our, you know, with the events at Bulldog Park, that you can assess the sports tracks, and just, I mean, just in general, I mean, there, there is a vibe to our point, this is what we want, because we've got so much going on. And I've noticed when I go to some of these, and I say this to a lot of the department heads that are here, right? Like, yeah, I brought up earlier, we're, we're making a salary, going to work sometimes, having a little bit of opportunity. And I see some of the people that, you know, some of the employees of the city that are there, but, but they're an hourly employee, right? So they're getting, they're there until ten or eleven at night, but they're getting paid overtime. And we've got department heads that are there until ten or eleven at night, that are peasants, don't get their time, right?
They don't get overtime.
They don't get overtime, right, they get what their salaries. I get it, and their salaries are, you know, compensated, the position, correct? But, but there is a lot of, I've noticed a lot of extra time, but I can't tell you the amount of time that's taken. You know, Diana and Jenny and Adam and literally everybody, I mean, it's like it's a team effort, you know, I see you guys up there all the time. And so I think maybe next budget season, I know it's going to be tough now, I want to muddy the waters, but I think maybe we ought to put some, you know, if, if they're at an event, you know, outside of their work hours by, you know, I don't know what's at them, you know, if they're there for an extra four hours, maybe we see if we can figure out, you know, there's a fifty, hundred dollars night, but there's something that goes in, it's kind of a, it's kind of an incentive to go, hey, we get it, you're here, you're putting in all this time, that's appreciated, I don't think it's got to be something that breaks the bank, I think it's more of something that just shows some appreciation, gratitude, or a lot of time to make the city what we, what we all want to be. So I mean, I just started bringing that out as I was kind of going through some of this stuff, and, and calculating kind of what everybody's pay, and sort of what, you know, a crew leader was going to make, and they're super fun, apart from each other. Yeah, I mean, that's definitely something we could look at. Appreciate you bringing that up. Now, that's very well approached. Obviously, anything, yeah, I guarantee everyone, my employees likes money. So, and yeah, I'm not going off the limb, just, especially the salary.
Who put on the list?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Council member Chad Jeffrey?
Yes.
Don Stokes?
Yes.
Andrew Karas?
Yes.
Laura Sarmman?
Yes.
Carol Draska?
Yes.
Zach Ryan?
Yes.